Good evening. At this time, I'll call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like to welcome everyone this evening. The Marshall City Council continues to meet as under COVID restrictions. So the majority of the council is connected by distance. So I will ask City Clerk Kyle Box to take the role of the city council.
Mayor Burns.
Here.
Craig Schaefer. Steve Meister.
Here.
Don Edblum.
Here.
John De Kramer.
Here.
Russ La Bat.
Here.
Jim Lozinski.
Here.
And the council is present. Thank you, Craig. The the entire city council is present at this meeting. We have an agenda before us. The one item we will, we have a lengthy agenda this evening. One item I'll ask that be removed from the agenda is under consent agenda. Agenda I have number seven. That item was actually taken care of at our last meeting. Is there any other additions or deletions to that agenda? If not, we'll operate under that agenda. We'll then move to agenda I have number two. Agenda I have number two is has to do with the mayor for the day event. We have a number of guests that are also connected by Zoom and these are some of the winners of the mayor for the day contests. And as a background, the mayor for the day contest was held in January. It was open to kids that are in the fourth, fifth, or sixth graders. So it was, the purpose of it was to involve the young people and they were asked a simple question. What would Marshall look like if you were in charge of cultivating the best in all of us? So we had a number of entries, a number of great entries and the entries took a variety of forms. They could write an essay. They could do some poetry, do a video, do some artwork. Or, you know, whatever else they chose to do. So those were the, the, what was submitted. And we'd like to highlight some of those entries. So at this time, we'll show some of the entries. This is Marshall Mayor Bob Burns. In late January, many of you know, we had a mayor for the day contest. Fourth, fifth, and sixth graders could enter this. They maybe wrote an essay, maybe drew a picture, maybe did a poem, maybe did something else to really express what their ideas were if they were mayor for the day. So we had some really great entries and I really, really thank every young person who, who took the time to submit an entry and also share your ideas because, you know, there's some great ideas. Let's take a look.
If I were mayor for a day by Benjamin. If I were mayor for a day, I would close school and have a huge celebration. We would bring rabbits to the holiday to play with. We would have snow roller coasters. We would add the Lyon County Fairgrounds. All the stores and Marshall will close and will get paid as well as other community and government services. All people without jobs that are 18 and older would get paid $2,000. We would have a huge feast. At night, we would have candles and we would play games like Ghost in the Gravia. When it hit 8:00 PM, we would send everyone home on a snow trolley.
Hi, my name is Cash. And if I was mayor for a day, I would encourage everybody to do good deeds in their neighborhood. And if they did that, we would celebrate with ice cream together. I love Marshall.
Good evening, Marshall community. When I think of being mayor for a day, I had a lot of start ideas. Number one, I put together a group of people of different beliefs, backgrounds, and nationalities to come together and share our stories so we can stand and hopefully come together more. Two, a secret drop off box for concerns, ideas, and so forth. Three, monthly recognitions for our local heroes as in cops, firefighters, nurses, and a lot more. But let's be honest, how much can you do in one day? Well, for me, for starters, I can hand out free masks or the community can hand out free masks for people who need them and would like some more. And just also help the community have more joy and cheer during these hard times. I'm Coral and I approve this message. Ding.
Hi, my name is Elise and I'm going to read my mayor for a day essay. Thanks for being the marshal mayor because I don't, I do not want to be the mayor. My name is Elise and being mayor sounds hard. And how do you decide what we are supposed to do? It just makes me panic. But the, here are some things I might do if I were mayor. First, I would give $50 to everyone in Marshall and send everybody invitations to go to church everywhere around the world if they wanted to. I would name October the outdoor mouse month. July would be named take care and be nice to animals unless they attack you. January 24th and 25th would be named picture days. And after I would, after I would give letters out on December 1st that if you want, you should buy an animal from the pet shelter to help them get a home. That is what I might do and maybe more. Thank you for listening. Elise is out. Bye. I love horses and my favorite sport is volleyball. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Meyer and I'm going to read my mayor for a day essay. If I were mayor for a day, first I would make a fun local area that everyone could go to. It would have a big playground for older kids and a smaller playground for younger kids and toddlers. I would also include a comfortable area for parents to watch their kids. It would have a smoothie machine. During winter, it would have coffee. A little ways over, it would have a basketball court and in the winter, we would put water into it and turn it into an ice skating rink. It would also have a warming house with skates and other supplies. In the opposite direction, there would be a volleyball court. That would be, that would take a while, but it would get finished. I would call it Foundations Park. I would make then a foundation that gives donations to the poor, elderly, and people with special needs. This mayor for thing, this is this mayor for a day thing exhausts me. So I'm glad that you're the mayor instead of me. I would also like to show you what the park would look like. Thank you.
If I were mayor for a day by Julia. If I were mayor for a day, I would gladly say coronavirus go away. I know you wanted to stay. So now it's time to flip it down to see what game we're going to play. So after we played some basketball, I gave the pizza place Domino's a call. It was free pizza for all. So after they were full, they looked like some bucking bulls. So I told them to go mark out and they started to pout. Then they were, that, that they were hot. Then I just knew the spot. So we went to the pool and then they were cool. So when they were done, we had more fun. We had a balloon fight and we ended up alright. The people's tummies were growling while downtown was hollering. Free food for all. The government paid for all. So now everyone was tucked in bed and everyone said, that was the best day ever. I wish it lasted forever.
Hi, my name is Gail and I am sixth grade in the middle of our first school. I think this mayor for a day experience would be good for me. I've gotten to see it in high school and I like to do it. My video is about how I, the stuff I like about Marshall. And I think Marshall is, um, um, the only one thing that I would add, but my video is about what I like about Marshall.
So as we saw, there's some really great talent, some great ideas and who knows, in 10, 15 years, maybe some of these young people might be mayor for longer than a day. Thank you, everyone who participated. Thank you to community services that coordinated this and we look forward to this contest again next year. So thank you, all the participants. A special note to the kids, the, you do have a certificate. Each of you can pick up at the community services office or at the offices at SMSU. So if you have any questions, just give a call to the community services office. You have a certificate you can pick up. So once again, thanks. We look forward to doing this again next year. Now, we'll move on with the less fun part of our agenda, but important parts of our agenda. So we'll move on with the city council agenda. Agenda I have number three is consider approval of the minutes of our last regular meeting that is, was held on February 9th. The council does have the minutes. Are there any corrections at this time?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve.
Motion seconded by Craig to approve the minutes as they have been presented. We'll move to a vote. Kyle.
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Don Edblum.
Yeah.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ La Bat.
Yes.
Kim Lozinski.
Yes.
And motion passes. Agenda item number four would be the first bid that we'll consider this evening, first of three. This will be the two minutes overlay project. We'll consider a resolution that would accept a bid and award the contract. This time I'll call Jason Anderson, Director of Public Works, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mayor. This is our annual Mill and Overlay project on our local routes. On February 19th, we received bids. We received two bids on the project. Our project estimate was $625,000. And the low bid was from Dunick of Prinsburg, Minnesota, in the amount of $580,564.28. The bids were very good and competitive. Staff would recommend an award to Dunick in an amount not to exceed $625,000.
Are there, thank you, Jason. Are there any questions?
Jason, you're going to use the extra money to do more feet of street, correct?
Yes, Councilman, that's correct. Actually, if you remember from the work session, there was a small segment of Marshall Street that was identified on that, on that sheet as a local route, not a state aid route. We're going to see how that fits, but we would likely propose to plug that stretch of street into this project and get it covered here as opposed to with a later project. And we think we can get that done.
And Jason, that's the segment from North Sixth Street to North Seventh Street on Marshall, correct?
That is correct.
I would make that motion to approve the bid at 6:25.
I second it. Motion by Jim, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle, would you take the vote?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Don Edblum.
Yes.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ La Bat.
Yes.
Kim Lozinski.
Yes.
And the motion does pass. Agenda I have number five is the James Avenue Camden Drive reconstruction project. We have a couple items here. First would be the resolution declaring the official intent regarding the reimbursement of the expenditures with the proceeds of taxes and bonds. And then following that would be then the resolution that would accept the bid and award the contract. Once again, I'll ask Jason Anderson to present his recommendation.
Thank you, Mayor. This project is the reconstruction and utility replacement on James Avenue between Camden and South Fourth and also on Camden Drive between James and South Fourth Street. Concurrently with this project, we'll be doing storm sewer workout across the golf course to the river. On February 19th, we received bids for this project and we received four excellent bids. Again, we've experienced really good bids so far this season and we're really excited about the, the numbers that have been coming in. On this particular project, the low bid was produced by Kekley Underground of Kimball, Minnesota, in the amount of $849,244.50. This project is a special assessment project and it will be assessed per our current policy. And staff would recommend that we award to Kekley Underground for that amount. And then we have in 5% allowance for contingency and 16% for engineering administration. It brings the total up to 1.034 million.
Hey, thank you, Jason. Any questions for Jason?
I move approval, the recommendation as, as recommended.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim to approve the resolution declaring the official intent regarding the reimbursement of the expenditures with the proceeds of taxes and bonds. Discussion on that motion?
Jason, just a quick question. So all of our easements with the golf course are in place now or is that all signed?
Do have assigned easement with the golf course. That is correct.
Perfect. Thank you.
I believe that may actually even be on the agenda tonight.
That's correct.
Yes.
Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle.
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Don Edblum.
Yeah.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ La Bat.
Yes.
Kim Lozinski.
Yes.
And the motion does pass. Then the action next would be the resolution that would accept the bid and award the contract as recommended.
I'll move that resolution.
Motion by, motion by John, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, Kyle.
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Don Edblum.
Yeah.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ La Bat.
Yes.
Kim Lozinski.
Yes.
And the motion passes. Agenda I have number six, consider the award of bids for the street sweeper for the street department. Dean, are you going to take this or do you want Jason? I'll call Jason Anderson to introduce this and recommendation.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is a little bit of a lengthy memo. It's, I'll give a little background. You, you may remember we put bids forward last July for the replacement of our 2015 Elgin Pelican Street Sweeper. We had one bid from McQueen Equipment and that is the, off of the state contract. At the July 14th meeting, the council requested that we consider keeping that piece of equipment instead of trading it in. And that gives us some operational flexibility. Council then tabled that and allowed staff to review. And we've since done that and we've come, we've come back and in the 2021 budget, made sure that we had the funding available. And then we also did some checking with other communities per council request. So you see the data there. Most of our comparable communities do run two street sweepers and many of them also have some leaf vacuum equipment. So staff feels pretty good about the recommendation that we have here to purchase the new street sweeper and actually keep the 2015 street sweeper in our rotation. We really like the flexibility that that'll offer us to roll out in the spring with two machines or in the fall during leave time with two machines. And also hopefully defer some of the maintenance and hours on the equipment. Ideally, this, this will work out very well for us. We do have 245,000 in the budget for this 2021 year and we are expecting the expense to be 240,259. This purchase is coming directly off the, the state contract. Staff would, would recommend that we go forward with this and as the mayor recognized, Dean Kudrin is in the audience as well, our Public Works Superintendent for any specific questions about the equipment.
Thank you, Jason. Questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Jim, and then.
Um, I don't really have a question, but this is the discussion that Craig and I brought up at, um, our committee meeting. And I believe the trade in for the old sweeper, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it was like 65,000 where the discussion came up. Is that trade in value, is it going to really go up or down? We're looking at a machine, we're going to trade in for 65,000, still has a lot of usable hours in it. And that's where we tasked the city staff on doing more research on this and trying to get more use out of our dollars into that machine over the course of the next five years. So we're keeping them a little longer and in 10 years, that machine probably still going to fetch 55,000, $60,000. So that's where a lot of this came from. I mean, Jason, the question I do have is they're holding the same price that they offered us in July, correct?
That's correct. Their price will go up on March 1st. Their state contract adjusts. So we get the same price from last July. I think I've got a typo. I say a 2020 Elgin in this memo. It'll actually be a 2021, but the price is the same until March 1st and then the price will go up. And I believe Dean did some checking with the vendor and it was a pretty significant increase. I think it was around $9,000.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Um, Mr. Mayor, this is, this is Doug Meister. So my question is, we had one bid from McQueen Equipment. Is, and that's all we got or was there just no other bids? Because ideally, you know, when you put something out for a bid, you like at least three, if not more.
That's a good question, Councilman. Last July, when we solicited bids, we had one bid. This go around, we are purchasing directly off the state contract.
Is, is there a possibility we can save more money by getting more bids?
We do not believe that we would receive another competitive bid or a more competitive bid. When we solicited back in July, we received this lone bid.
There's, and Dean can address this too, but Doc, those are great questions in that there's really just a handful of, of machines and the, the type that we use, the Pelican type sweeper is, is pretty exclusive to Elgin. And then the tenant company makes them, but they're more like a, like a small, like a light duty, like a three and a half ton or a four ton truck with a sweeper bed on it, but they're not the rear steer like the Pelicans are. So it's a fairly small, small supply. And the, the other key with this is, is this is state contract. So those are bids that are done by admin, state admin. And then because we're part of the cooperative, the cooperative purchasing venture, we can buy directly off of those state bids. So it's already been bid. It's just been bid through management and budget or admin.
That is great. And one other note on that, that's the only tricycle type made anymore. The rest are all chassis style. One thing you run into is the height that you have for dumping capacity. So we get a little careful there. This one is actually on the state contract is on the low end of all the sweepers on there right now.
And the, as Dean was also at the podium, the, the real reason to have two sweepers is that there's a, there's a time factor in, you know, sweeping up the salt and sand in the spring before it gets in, perhaps washed into the storm sewer and ultimately could get into the river and public waters area. So and that time factor is really dependent on weather and also equipment, not breaking down.
Exactly. And that's what we run into. You know, normally your springs get the rain right away. So if we can get on it sooner the better, like you say. And right now it takes us at least three weeks in the spring to get through everything good. So if you can cut that down and run two machines, you're down to a week and a half a piece, you know, so it varies and we can run them longer too, you know, if you ship our guys and employees a little bit so they're running later in the evening too. So we do have options there, but it costs factor, you know, you either got to start people later, pay the overtime. So then another real issue is the fall time leaves and that's something later in next budget cycle, maybe we'll look at. There's several different leaf vacuums out there too, but these seem to be working good, but you got to hit them at the right time. You know, gutters are, they're always wet with water and so it does create a little problem, but we've been fortunate. We get by with them. So exactly the quicker we get on the sand and salt areas, better keep it from the storm waters.
Thank you, Dean. Any other questions for either Jason or Dean?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have a question. Just, I want to thank the city staff for getting the information regarding the other cities. There are a couple of cities that do have one. And so that would be my contention. It's, I know we have a lot of businesses in town that are probably still suffering and continue to suffer because of COVID. And I look at this expenditure of a quarter of a million dollars plus. Is that, is it a need or is it a want? And I think this is a one area that we could probably save some money for the city and for the taxpayers and, and whether we put it off for a year, it's, I know it's a $9,000 or $10,000 increase, but I look at this expenditure as probably more of a want than a need. So I will be voting against it.
Any other input?
Is the net online yet?
What?
Is the net online yet there? A net? This is actually coming out of the storms, out of the storm sewer or storm water fund. So this has zero levy impact to any of our taxpayers, correct?
Correct. This is funded with user fees from this, from the stormwater side.
And just a note on that, that part of this, and Jason can better address this too, but you know, when we look at our compliance with MS4, a lot of compliance with MS4 is maintenance. And we've talked about that before, that the city of Marshall and our public works team does a really good job of helping to take care of our contractors and our other businesses that maybe don't in their ingress egress for their businesses where they have heavy trafficking and not, we don't make them pave them or put in a rock break to shed things off the tires. The city actually does an enhanced sweeping schedule there to keep the streets clean. And that's all part of the compliance for our stormwater permit. So being able to do what Dean described of getting our spring salt and sand up in a week and a half versus three weeks is a big factor when we do our audit for compliance. And again, this is part of the enterprise fund of stormwater. That's what we pay this, the surface water fees for is to help maintain this. So we spent about a year and a half now back and forth on one sweeper, two sweeper, what's the cost benefit to the community? And because we're able to put fewer hours at a time on these, run the machines out a little longer, still maintain a resale. This is actually a, a pretty significant cost savings. It's like the, the lawnmower rotation for the parks department though, it's a little bit upfront to get the second one. But as this phase is in, this will actually be a savings in a number of ways. So I think it is actually a net benefit to the city when you run it out. So I still think this is a good method and I would actually make a motion that we approve.
Motion on the table by Craig to approve the purchase of the street sweeper as recommended. Is there a second to that motion?
I will second it.
Seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle.
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Don Edblum.
Yeah.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ La Bat.
No.
Kim Lozinski.
Yes.
Motion does pass. We'll move then to the consent agenda, recognizing that agenda I have number seven, that's listed, has been removed. So we'll bring the items that are the consent agenda up on the screen and they include starting with agenda I have number eight, the surplus property for the Marshall Fire Department, council approval, the, the Marshall Fire Department to apply for FEMA AFG assistance to firefighter grant, consider the application for exemption for the permit for RMEF. Consider the request of Marshall Downtown Business Association for St. Patrick's Day Parade on March 13th, 2021. The frontline warning system, which is outdoor. The frontline warning system, which is outdoor warning sirens contract with the City of Marshall renewal. Consider the resolution calling for public hearings on the street reconstruction plan, the capital improvement plan, tax abatements, and issuance of general obligation bonds. Consider the approval of a change order for a city hall project. I consider the employee, employment contract for the Director of Administrative Services calling for the public hearing regarding the proposed property tax abatement, location 1303 Wind Star Street, and then consider the approval of bills and the project payments. So is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed or prepared as a separate discussion?
14 and 15, please.
Any other item? If not, is there a motion to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda?
So move.
Motion by Steve, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yes.
John DeCramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
Yes.
Tim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Agenda Number 14, Russ?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I bring this up just because if it's for the public's information, while this is a small increase, we did have a couple of areas that we have a significant decrease, one in savings of over 4100 and another one less than 300. But where we have the increases with the engineering space and that we was reconfigured. And in our committee meeting, I voted no, and I said, the reason I voted no is because I don't recall discussing those change orders. And I went back and looked at all the minutes, the minutes that I had. And I don't see that we had approved them or discussed them, but I maybe don't have all the minutes. So I just like, I just bring that up, that the engineering space was reconfigured and I don't recall voting on it, but maybe my other committee members do. So I just bring it up mostly for the savings that we are saving some money on on the project again. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Russ. Any other input on that item?
Well, I can address that a little bit. We have to remember that the city has a change order policy. And at this time, when this change order was done, it fell well within the bounds of that change order policy. So the staff technically did not have to bring that engineering stuff forward. And I do know in the minutes, it was discussed with Glenn, because we took windows out of the back of this building for this change order, which those windows were removed. So, but there is a change order policy in place. And at 5,580, that fell hundreds of thousands of dollars below what that policy would have been acted for a vote.
And Mr. Lozinski, I totally agree with you, but this particular change order I found out was made after Glenn left. So.
Okay, other discussion on that item? If not, you have a change order before you, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, one, one more question?
Go ahead, Steve.
These are all done already, aren't they?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, Steve, I think a lot of this is also cleanup from the change order PR for a long time ago. This is kind of a cleanup on that change order, is what this says.
Sharon, do you have a comment?
Yeah, just for the background for the council. I was not able to attend the city hall committee meeting that was held last week where this change order was discussed. When we originally presented the engineering space reconfiguration, we didn't feel that there would need to be any cost additions for a door frame. That came later on, when they were actually doing the framing of that space, which was much later after the presentation of the space reconfiguration. There was also some debate on whether or not there needed to be a door frame change. We thought maybe the existing one could have been used. And, and when they viewed it, was it upside down? Was it that the right direction? And again, I missed the city hall committee meeting, but it's my understanding that door frame was needed. So the actual request for this particular change did not come until recently. I mean, I can go back and look at dates, but it was much, much later than the original discussion of the engineering space.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. What's the wishes of the council on this change order?
I'll make a motion to approve change, change order.
A motion by John, seconded by Jim, to approve the change order. Discussion? Now move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yes.
John DeCramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
No.
Tim Lozinski?
Yes.
And a motion passes. Agenda Number 15, that's the employment contract with the Director of Administrative Services. Russ?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, the reason I wanted to bring this up is that, you know, Annette does a numerous outstanding job. She does an important, she holds an important position for the city, you know, and for all of us. And helps, helps not only me, but I think every one of us, council members and the mayor and city staff. She responds to numerous questions and, and if she doesn't have the answer when we first ask, she finds us the answer and gets us that answer in a, in a very prompt response time. The only thing I'd like to ask is that, you know, a lot of employers around, not only Marshall, but around the state and around the nation are finding out that their productivity from their employees is probably better when they're working from home. In fact, there's been rumors around Marshall that a couple of our major employers are considering maybe not bringing their employees back into the building because they're having productivity improvements, employees working from home. While, while this change is beneficial to Annette by working at home one day a week, I'd like to ask Sharon Hanson, do we have any benefits to the city and to the overall operations from this? And my second part of this question, are we setting a precedent for possible future, future requests? That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Yeah, that was a good intro to this topic because I am sure that there is a lot of discussion about the office and, and, you know, is it going to be the future or is it not? I can tell you that we have had at the city a lot of remote, remote work. And that was really to promote safety during the pandemic, which we're still currently in. We still have a small number of employees that are working remotely. And this is, of course, is just to enhance the safety. But when we, when we move back to city hall, we, we are fully moving back to city hall. We are not going to have employees working from home. And I think the, the future is, is yet to be known. We can look historically at some major companies that have done work from home, and they have gone in the opposite direction, meaning that over time they have found that productivity is not the same as being in a collaborative teamwork environment as, as we would have being in an office arrangement. I also think that certain sectors of the, you know, of the workforce, it kind of depends on what you're doing. If you're an IT person, I do think that you have an ability to do a lot of things remotely. You don't necessarily have to be present. I think legal firms, as an example, we've heard a lot of legal firms in the Twin Cities that have reduced office space. I think their work may lend well to working from home. But specific to government, we are, we are in the service industry, and if but for the public, we cease to exist. And I think, I think we just have to have that physical presence. And, and I do highly, highly support the collaborative random interactions that, that our staff has and how that enhances their, their work environment. The second part is, are we setting a precedent? You know, one thing that the, the HR director, Sheila Dubs, and I have talked about is, you know, is this something we want to look at across the, all the employees of the city of Marshall, it would have to be a policy change. And although we like flexibility, because we know that our salaried employees are working, most of them over 40 hours a week, random. It could be any time of the day, it could be any weekend, it could be any holiday. I think for the salaried employees, they're just in a, in a, in a different situation than maybe the other employees where it's eight to five and there's overtime earned. So in that way, I think precedent is kind of limited. And the other item here too is, because of the, the work that is put out by our salaried employees, you know, we could have maybe arranged for some kind of flexibility without coming to the council, not putting it in a formal agreement. But we just felt like we should get permission to do this. And it is formal on behalf of the employee too. It's, it's definitely a benefit for the employee and, and for us. We see it as a way to retain the employee. And I don't want to get into a lot of specifics, but there's some outside pressures personally that have made the weight of this request. So I think it's a pretty modest request. And again, with an employment agreement, you usually do those if, if you're going outside policy. That's the case here. And there's some mutual benefits on behalf of the city as well. She's got to give us more notice if there was a, a change of employment. If there was a situation where there's termination, there's some mutual benefit there as well. But essentially, it is to formalize the request of one day a week. It's the city reserve the right to terminate, adjust, deny. We have, I think, also retain a lot of power in this agreement, I would say. And so I guess that's my answer to it. I, I think it's a, a small ask, but at the same time, it's outside policy. We wanted to formalize it and get the consent of council.
Thank you, Sharon. That was a thorough explanation. So thank you.
Thank, thank you, Sharon. That was explained very well. And I just, again, I just want to echo not only with Annette, but other city staff. You know, the extra hours they do put in, it's very much appreciated, and I'm sure not only by me, but by all of us. Thank you, Sharon.
John?
Yeah. Can I just ask you to address something we talked about earlier as far as why now or the, after the compensation study?
Well, I think on the agenda, our HR director is going to talk about comparable worth study. And the comparable worth study is going to focus on salaries. It's, it's not a benefit. I don't believe we're talking about benefit or policy comparisons. It's strictly going to be on, on salary. And so it doesn't really relate, is kind of the short, brief answer.
And the comparable worth study also focuses on, focuses on the work function, which would not be impacted by, by this action.
Yeah. Oh, thank you. Again, I just wanted to get that question out because it was brought up before and just so council has an answer on that too.
Thank you, John. Any other discussion on this item?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I could, just very briefly. And again, I, Russ brings up a good point about precedent in the, in the Personnel Committee. When we reviewed this, there was a lot of discussion about the pros and cons here. And, and I think this is very well thought out. I think it's very equitable between both us, you know, the city and, and the, and Annette. And, you know, I think the, I know the Personnel Committee is strongly in support of this.
Any other questions? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion.
I move approval.
I would second that.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yes.
John DeCramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
Yes.
Tim Lozinski?
Yes.
The motion passes. Agenda Number 18, consider the approval of the, of a consulting firm to conduct the classification and compensation study. This was a reference in the previous item. Sheila Dubs, Human Resource Director, City of Marshall, has done the background work on this and has your recommendation. Sheila?
Thank you, Mayor. Back in November, staff received council approval to initiate a request for proposals to conduct a classification and compensation study. And from that, from that RFP, a total of seven proposals were received. A copy of each proposal has been reviewed by staff and provided to the council for review and consideration. A class and comp study enables the city to develop a compensation system and supporting processes and policies to meet our hiring and retention needs. It enables us to develop an implementation plan that compiles, that complies with federal and state laws while ensuring that pay for employees is competitive. And it enables the city to perform a competitive, comprehensive review of job descriptions so that they are accurate and up to date. A class and comp study is needed for several reasons. The city's most recent class and comp study was initiated 10 years ago in 2011. Since that time, there have been significant organizational changes. It has become increasingly difficult to incorporate the changes into our current classification structure. I'm also concerned about our ability to obtain ongoing consultation to perform job evaluations under our current hay point factor method of job evaluation. We've been utilizing an independent contractor to perform these evaluations for the past 10 years, and I'm uncertain of his ongoing availability. The city needs a consulting firm to perform job evaluations on an ongoing basis. Approval of a study will also address several areas of concern that the council has requested be addressed. These include a review of selected positions for current market competitiveness, the expansion in the number of steps. Our current system has six steps, and employees progress through these steps annually. One step for each year of service with a performance evaluation that meets or exceeds expectation. The council for several years has requested expansion in the number of those steps. And lastly, a review of selected positions for internal equity. I'd like to say just a little bit more about that piece. The council reviewed the city's most recent pay equity report in January. According to that report, our compensation structure requires attention. We were in compliance with state law. However, the results of the statistical testing of that report show that the city is very close to noncompliance. We need a professional consultant trained in developing a classification and compensation structure to ensure that we do maintain compliance with the Pay Equity Act. A consultant for this study will be able to advise us on several important decisions and steps. These include which job evaluation is best for the city based on our needs, navigating the meet and confer process with unions, establishing our competitor entities for the city, the library, and public housing, defining our benchmark positions. These are the positions that will be used to compare pay information to other organizations, and development of a classification structure and modified step range. And lastly, advice on implementation options. Last week, on February 17th, the Personnel Committee met and reviewed information on why a study is needed and reviewed each of the proposals. The committee focused their attention on the three lowest cost proposals. In their review, they, their discussion included the project fees as well as the post-project fees, the job evaluation systems proposed by each entity, and the references obtained by staff. At that meeting, the Personnel Committee unanimously recommended proceeding with Gallagher Benefit Services Incorporated to perform the study. The request this evening from staff is that the council authorize us to enter into a contract with Gallagher Benefit Services.
Thank you, Sheila. And also thank you to the Personnel Committee who reviewed the very extensive proposals. John, you have a comment from the Personnel Committee?
Yeah, just wanted to fill the council in on a little bit of our process and going through the evaluation. As Sheila had mentioned, we had seven proposals. We reduced that down to three early on in our meeting and then reviewed the three in greater detail. And really, the reason for our selection, again, Sheila touched on it, but just And really, the reason for our selection, again, Sheila touched on it, but just wanted to emphasize that a little bit. Kind of the, by choosing the Gallagher Benefit Services, we have really the be more options. We know we're going to get away from, away from the hay point system, and everybody, personnel and staff were, was okay with that. The concern was not getting ourselves into a single position with a consultant that we have to go back to, and then there's added cost with that every time. And if something happens to that particular consultant, we'd be back to the beginning probably again of running through it. So that was the reason for really choosing the Gallagher. They've had the, the decision ban method, the, the state job match, and several other options there. So they're more, a little more universally available. So if we do need to at some point get somebody else other than this firm to help us, that help is out there and it's not a proprietary system.
Thank you, John. Any other input or questions from the council?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question either for Personnel Committee or Sheila. On the spreadsheet that they provided underneath additional expenses, it said the Gallagher Benefit Services. It says work beyond the scope of the proposal will incur additional costs such as onsite meetings. Reading through this proposal, the first item I see is on page four, it says meet with city leadership to understand the city's perspective issues. Does that mean they're going to be onsite? Does that mean they're going to do Zoom or whatever? Further on down, it says Gallagher typically conducts group interviews and selects employee interviews to confirm our understanding of the jobs being studied. Again, is this going to be an additional expense or is that included? Go back onto page sixteen, they say that, again, the same thing, are they going to meet with people? And then again, my, I think the last page that I have highlighted, and I maybe missed a few, no, that's on something else. So I just question, are they going to have at all in-person meetings? Do we know? Or are we going to, if they do, are they, are we going to be charged extra for that?
Sheila?
We do know the answer to that, thank you, Councilman. All meetings will be virtual, provided by this consultant. They did state that in their proposal. If we request for them to come onsite, there will be additional costs. And that was a pattern I saw with many of the proposals that, especially during the pandemic. They have the, the systems in place, the tools in place to be able to meet, do focus groups, do meetings virtually through a variety of, of meeting presentations. So they can meet with employees one-on-one, they can do groups, and they can do council sessions virtually.
Thank you, Sheila, I assume, I assume because of COVID that most of everything was going to be, you know, done remotely. But I just thought maybe they might have the initial meeting one-on-one with either you or Sharon or the mayor or something. But then my second question I was going to refer to is, is when they asked the employees to fill out the questionnaire. I didn't read anything in there that is confidential, that the employee realizes that this will be confidential. Maybe I missed it, will it be confidential when they submit it with the employee?
It will not be confidential, no.
Okay. So any, a city employee fills that out and, and anybody within the city could look at their responses? Or just the firm?
The questionnaires relate to the person's functions and the capacity and decision-making within their own position. There is nothing in a questionnaire that would relate specifically to an individual employee's education or training, if you will. It's, it's all very generally written for anyone that serves in that position, so would not be confidential.
Okay, thank you, Sheila.
Other questions? Sheila is, you know, recognizing that the Personnel Committee has recommended this firm. You are also, as Human Resources Director, will work very closely, is this also your recommendation?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Move to approve.
One second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by John, discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote, Kyle.
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
No.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
The motion passes. Agenda of number nineteen, the fire sta, fire station roof replacement proposals and contracts. I'll call on Marshal Fire Chief Quentin Brunsville.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you can see by the packet that you received, the background information is there. All your three proposals were solicited by some vendors within the state of Minnesota. And based on price, the, we're recommending approval, approval of this from Horizon Roofing for one oh three two hundred. And I'm here to entertain any questions that you may have about that.
Thank you, Quentin, are there questions?
Do, John? Just a little question on the options, what, you know, that are not being chose. I wasn't real clear going through this, what those options are and why they weren't chose or whatever.
Sure, so the, the specs that were sent out were very vague to request for proposals. One, one was, the idea was to have a fully adhered EPDM sixty mil on the lower portion of the roof of the fire station, which would be over the offices or the live-in area, kitchen, training room area. The main area of the fire station, I would call the apparatus bay, where all the fire trucks are underneath all that. The third part is the smallest, is the host tower, it's the highest piece, but it's the, still needs to be factored for sure. Not knowing, because I'm not a professional when it comes to roof replacement, I worked with it a little bit in my, in my current job. But I, I just wanted to get opinions from vendors on what they suggest. Based on the decking material, so the area that the roofing material connects to on the, on the building, they advise that the best option would be to fully adhere the lower portion, training room, kitchen, live-in area. And the highest part, because it's a metal roofing material, or excuse me, decking material, and to maintain the ballasted portion of the roof over the largest section. Because mostly due to the fact that they can't connect easily to the concrete deck. They came to metal, it's not very easy, and personally, I don't really want them drilling into the concrete deck too badly. So the recommendation was to maintain the ballasted portion of the largest area of the, of the, of the building, and then take the ballast off, which is just river rock, take the ballast off the building for a couple of reasons. Number one, we have a pretty significant buildup of organic material from the leaves that are falling on it for the last twenty-five years, which created big issues and the reason why it leaked the few times it did, because there isn't a way for the water to get to the, to the roof drains that are up there. And the second portion, I don't remember what I was going to say. I'm just yakking up here.
I was following you up to that point.
Thank you, yeah, just sound like you know what I'm talking about.
And Jim, I think you had a question.
Did I answer your question, Councilman?
I think, yeah, when you got into the person that not connecting the ballast and trying to get.
Sure, so the idea was really to remove the ballast from this, from the areas. Now, the recommendation initially to them was to remove all the ballast. But then the proposals came in that that wasn't a good idea to do that, and I fully supported that.
Okay, thank you, Quentin, Jim?
I, I was just looking over the bids and, and I'm fine with the recommendation, but with the Gag sheet metal, the new arm, and it's a total of an extra seventeen hundred dollars, we do pick up five years more in warranty. But what was the option, why we did possibly do that for the extra five-year warranty on that?
I wanted to make sure it was a council's decision to do that. Once again, the recommendation for the, was just for the lowest bid. That was talked about with Chief Marshal and myself about the, the very small amount of money it would take to get to the next additional five years with the warranty. I'm fully supportive of that decision, if that's what council would rather do.
And I'm just looking, and I know a roofing warranty, I think that's a manufacturer warranty, which is better than labor warranty, because usually that's a taillight warranty.
Correct.
I would agree with the extra seventeen hundred to pick up the extra five-year warranty, because this is a hundred and three thousand dollar. And where I come up with the seventeen hundred dollars is they do not include the building permit, was eleven hundred plus six hundred. I would consider doing the extra seventeen hundred for the extra five-year warranty. I, it's a very cheap five-year extended warranty.
Thank you, Jim, other input?
Quentin, I, I just have a question for you. On the BICI bid, it had an R factor of thirty-five, and on the Gag bid, it had an R factor of thirty. I did not see that in the Horizon bid, do you know if that was about the same or somewhere in the neighborhood?
I would have missed it. Based on the, the, the thickness of the polyisole that they were installing, I was making the assumption that would be the same R factor as BICI's bid, based on that. Because if you notice on the GSM bid, it's, they're only proposing an inch and three-quarter. I don't know what, you know, the, the difference in five R value is necessarily. Maybe Councilman Lozinski can kind of fill us in a little bit more on that. But, but I was just assuming essentially that it would be the same.
Yeah, and that would be my second question, excuse me, that would be my second question, Quentin. And the other ones, they were saying two inch, and Gag was only going one and three-quarters, so I don't know, maybe, maybe Jim can fill us in on that.
Well, well, the question would be up there is how much, is there other insulation in that roof, or is it just this, this styrofoam?
So on the fully, where they would fully adhere, they would just add two, two inches, or the GSM would add the inch and three-quarter.
To what's existing already?
Excuse me?
To what's existing up there already?
Correct. And for the, the area above the apparatus bay, they would have to fully replace that, from what I was under, the, the way I understand it.
You know, you guys, put me on the spot here, R five is a big difference. I was assuming that we have insulation on that roof already. As you get to a point, you can over-insult, it just doesn't do any more good. So do we know what's up there currently? Does anybody have an idea?
GSM actually went up and did core samples, so they, they, they factored their proposal based on what we currently have. I can't say the same for BICI. I know that they've done a lot of our repair work and whatever, I'm presuming that they understand what's up there. And Horizon Roofing did not do any core sampling.
So I, I would say Gag then took the time to figure out that they're giving us the most cost-effective product for what we have up there, because they did core sampling, so obviously they did that. So I, I can't, without seeing their cores, I can't tell you what we have. But I would be comfortable with that inch and three-quarter already.
Okay, any other input or questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Steve?
Can you go back to that, to that previous slide there, please? We just had to go back down to the bottom there. Exclusions, Davis Bacon and prevailing wage rates, is that consistent amongst all three of those bids?
I don't even know what prevailing wages even means, to be honest with you.
Well, it wouldn't be.
So I don't think it really applies.
No, because that would be applicable if there's federal grant dollars.
Federal buildings.
That was, that was my question, really, it's not applicable to us, so.
Right.
My question would be, why would they put it in if it's not applicable to us, so?
Probably some boilerplate language.
They just shove it in and color good.
That could be, Steve, but the wage difference is significant, so they want to make sure they're not caught on that later. Your talk will probably double in labor costs.
Right, and I imagine they put that in there because they don't know exactly how we're giving funding for this, right?
Right, got it, thank you. So Mayor, this is. Let people know the difference between BICI and Gag and all three of the wages, or all three of the bids.
You asking Kyle to scroll down to the, to the bid tabulation sheet?
There we go.
Now, I want to just explain the reason why Horizon Roofing has two separate bids. Initially, when I sent the specs, and I use that in air quotes, part of it was adding two inches of wood decking around the exterior perimeter of the building. They feel that's completely unnecessary because of the parapet wall that's already constructed on the building. It's approximately seven and a half inches from the ballast to the top of the sheet metal, I'll call it. They feel it's completely unnecessary. I asked them, how much wall would you leave there, or how much roof ideally would, would you leave a wall above it? He said, if we could plan for it, it would be flush. So they feel it's unnecessary to add the, the wood to it. But for the purposes of bidding, according to the specs, they submitted another bid based on adding the decking. And you can see that wood is rather expensive at this time of the supply chain interruption with the pandemic.
Okay, thank you, Quentin, Chief Marshal, you have a comment?
I do, I just, Mayor and Council, I just want to let you know that we did ask Ilya to review these and just look over these bids. And he was comfortable with the beds that we received, and he didn't see anything that didn't, he was comparing apples to apples with all of them. He did comment on the thing that Councilman Lozinski caught was that five-year warranty, which he thought was somewhat a plus to this project. But Ilya did review it and was comfortable with what he saw in these bids.
Okay, thanks, Jim. And the other, Jim?
Yes, Quentin, so in the Gag sheet metal bid, I didn't see it, but is that parapet wall included in their bid yet, or that extra buildup?
Correct, they would add two inches of wood as well to bring up, based on the insulation increase.
We could ask them actually for a deduct on that if, if they don't think we need it at that time, too.
I, I think that's correct, yep.
Okay, any other questions or discussion?
I would make a motion to accept a Gag sheet metal bid from New Arm with Quentin talking or visiting with him about removing the parapet wall if they don't believe they need it. But if they believe they do, then we leave it down.
You mean the, the, the wood around the perimeter, correct?
Correct.
And the, Jim, before I accept your motion, also in your motion will be the language that the justification for accepting this bid also includes the extra five-year warranty.
Correct.
Okay, with that motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Russ, discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote, Kyle.
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer? Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
The motion passes. Thank you for a good discussion, thank you, Quentin. We'll move then to Agenda of number twenty, consider awarding the bid for the Engine three sixty truck refurbishing. Once again, Fire Chief Quentin Brunsville.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, as you can see from the background information, Engine three six oh is the number that this engine has that we use when dispatching. It's a two thousand and two Spartan engine that we have in it, and when I mean engine, just pumps water and not necessarily the engine itself. You have the background information here, point of reference for this is this was included in the two thousand and twenty capital improvement plan that was put out for last year. However, in discussion with some of our chief officers within the fire department and then Chief Marshal and myself, we felt due to the pandemic, it was appropriate to pull this item out of the CIP for purposes of trying to save as much money as possible due to the uncertainty. And so we feel that, and after discussing it with Director Administrative Services, that it was appropriate to bring it back forward since the money has already been allocated for this and now sits in reserves. I'm here for any questions, if you have any.
Thanks, Quentin, any questions?
Quentin?
I move approval.
Oh, I have a quick question.
Go ahead, Jim.
You put on here, it should extend the life at least five years, but I look at this, you're looking closer to ten years, aren't we?
I think so, I think it's appropriate to say that. Of course, once again, we don't really have any data to prove that. We're going by our, our tower aerial device that we've already done this to. And as you know, it was in the CIP for two years ago, and we pulled that and added five years to that. And so here we sit just kind of waiting, and it's still my favorite truck, and it's still, still not costing any money to the city, which is a benefit to the taxpayers. And as soon as we need to do something with that, we'll work that towards into the budget. But that's a million and a half dollars that we're trying to save as long as we can.
So I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Craig, discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote, Kyle.
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
Epstein.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Agenda I number 21, the grant permanent easement. This is that North First Street, um, James Camden Drive project. The I'll call on Jason Anderson to present this.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a brief presentation. There's two easements here, one for each project, one for the North First Project and one for the James Camden Project. Uh, both easements are passageway through private property and route to the river to make room for a stormwater pipe installation on our two upcoming reconstrucks this summer. Uh, the property owners that we worked with, the golf course and Kurt Van Mavren were both very good to work with. And uh, we've uh, we hope we can satisfy their their needs as we do the work that we need to get done. So I think I think that we'll have no issue with that and we would recommend execution of the easement.
And Jason, thank you for your time and attention and in the communication that led to this recommendation. So thank you. Uh, questions for Jason? Now, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve. Do you want to do this one at a time or?
We can handle this in one motion or both easements? Or?
Yeah. No, we can. One for entire TF.
Yeah. One motion will do it.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve both the uh, easements.
Second.
Motion by John, seconded by Russ. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote, Kyle.
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
And motion passes. Agenda I number 22 is the South Fourth Street Country Club Drive Intersection Improvement Project. Uh, the recommendation before us is to consider awarded proposals. Once again, Jason Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, in this year's engineering budget, we did include $20,000 in the budget for this work. Um, so we went ahead and put out an RFP and solicited proposals from numerous engineering firms uh, for the evaluation of the intersection, the heavily skewed intersection, the South Fourth and Country Club Drive. Uh, the purpose of this is to review that intersection and propose to us a few different alternatives for redesign of that intersection. Uh, the existing traffic signal is a 1983 vintage light and it's it's not compliant uh, with with current ADA laws. It's it's not even close, to be honest, and it's in need of some attention. So uh, we think there's opportunity for maybe some different geometric configuration at this intersection. So uh, we wanted to reach out to some engineering firms with some good geometric experience and and give us a few options so we can slot a future project into our CIP. So we received four good proposals. Um, some engineering staff, our team went met Matt, reviewed the proposals, uh, rated them and after our evaluation, uh, we would desire to hire SEH in the amount of $18,565. Uh, we think that they uh, brought forward a really good team and showed a really good proposal with good experience. And and we think that they'll give us a good product. So staff would recommend that we award this contract to SEH in the amount of $18,565.
And Jason, the the traffic signals that is there right now, as you point out, and you remember, this is the only uh, traffic signal in the city of Marshall that's not on a state highway. But traffic signals are paid for by the city but are really under the ownership or control of Mindot. So Mindot, you know, we could be forced into replacing these uh, traffic signals down the road if we don't study really what we want.
Sure, yeah. The other traffic signals that are on Mindot Highway are largely controlled by them and we're kind of at their whim. You know, this one being under our control, we have a little more flexibility, but um, you know, really we really want to look hard at removing this traffic signal if if at all possible. But what we want our consultant to review different options and give us some layouts and and some ideas of what this intersection might look like so we can come back to our council and have some more discussion.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Jason? If not, you have the recommendation. Motion by Craig, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote, Kyle.
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
No.
Don Edblum?
Yeah.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
No.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
Motion passes. Agenda I number 23, Consider Resolution of Support for the Channel Parkway Low Local Road Improvement Program is the grant application. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so Mindot has announced a large LRIP grant program this year. It was included in the 2020 bonding bill. There's $75 million uh, up for grabs per se. So we, uh, as city engineering staff decided to um, put together an application and that's what we're here for tonight is to ask for council support to submit our application for an LRIP grant. Uh, we'd be looking for a maximum award of 1.25 million dollars of grant dollars and we would have to uh, match that. Our proposed project is follows the yellow path on your your drawing there along Channel Parkway. We would be proposing to remove the existing bituminous roadway surfacing and replace it with a concrete surface. Uh, the purpose of doing that is taking advantage of the opportunity to secure grant funds and getting a lasting surface installed and on a stated route, as we talked about earlier in work session, our stated uh, fund is is pretty low right now. And if we can take some opportunities or find opportunities for grants, we think that it's in our best interest. Um, the road will need a mill and overlay at the very least in a few years. So we think that now is a good opportunity to try to secure some funding. Uh, if we're awarded a grant, we would have to come back to the council to execute a grant agreement. But we would propose to uh, finance a project, which would be a 2023 project, I believe, uh, with city bonding and uh, eventually using the state aid dollars to repay the city bond. So that's what we're proposing. Um, I would entertain any questions from the council if you've got some.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Steve.
So Jason, my question is, this uh, this particular route goes right again, right alongside the bike trail. How would milling overlay affect the bike trail? So if I or the mayor are riding our bikes along this and there's milling and overlaying going on, what is the risk to us as cyclists or pedestrians on that route?
Uh, no risk at all if you're on the sidewalk because uh, the trail does not cross Channel Parkway anywhere that I can think of. So it would be, all the work would be occurring on the blacktop surfacing alone. Uh, I think the trail would remain open and there should be no impact. And that would be the largely the case with the reconstruct, too. I think there'd probably be opportunity to leave the trail open.
Well, my specifically, Jason, my question is if they're doing the milling, are they going to be throwing chips and gravel when I drive by and I'm going to get pegged?
I wouldn't think that that would be a large concern of mine.
You'll be wearing a helmet, too, Steve.
Thanks. Appreciate that.
After a shin guard.
Mr. Mayor, Jason, I have a quick question. Oh, Steve, the only way you're going to hurt yourself is you've gawking, looking at the big equipment and run into it.
Yeah.
But um, why are we concrete? Is that part of the the grant program that they want concrete? I'm just curious why we would go that route. It is a better road, but it's much more expensive road.
Yeah, no, it's a good question. Um, no, that would not be a requirement of the grant. Um, you know, I think that a mill and overlay would not really be a a project that would get awarded. I don't think that they really prefer maintenance projects. They prefer reconstruction type of projects with this grant source. So that's one item. Um, but the other is um, through evaluation, we just we've we've noticed some stress cracking in the in the pavement and we just think with some of the heavy loads that use this route that it's best served as a concrete pavement. We think that we would get a nice, long life out of it. And uh, we just think it would be the best way to spend the dollar, especially if we can get some grant dollars.
I think that just like, I'm sorry, a side comment, Mr. Mayor, on this, too, is is with the truck traffic. But also, as we've talked, and I know there's been discussion about trying to limit through trucks on Main Street. And as we think about what a detour route would be, this would be is a critical pathway that would be in a exterior truck route uh, through truck diversion. And this this route gets a lot of heavy trucks with Magellan and ADM and all the rest. Uh, this thing gets a ton of truck traffic. And so I think this is a great candidate. If we can get a grant and do an upgrade to concrete surface, I think that would be a huge plus.
Thank you, Councilman. That's a good point. And that's a big part of our grant application because one of the criteria for this type of grant, this LRIP grant, Local Road Improvement Program, um, is that it be a route of regional significance. So we kind of have to make that case in the application that it is a regionally significant route and worthy of these dollars. And and we believe it is. And the truck traffic and how it serves our region is is a big part of that discussion.
Jason, is this a um, similar to what was done at Highway 23 where it's referred to as a white top resurfacing where it's a partial mill and then the concrete is put over the existing base and the remaining layer of asphalt?
That's a good question, Mayor. Uh, no, it is not. In this instance, we would be proposing to take all of the bituminous off and actually a little bit of the gravel out and put a full full depth concrete surface in of seven or eight inches. We will have to evaluate that if we get a grant and get into design. But um, and I know that concrete has that stigma of being higher price and it is higher price. But with a project of this size, we do believe that we would have potential to get a really good price.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? If not, is there a motion on the recommendation?
I move to approve the recommendation and solicit for the grant.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote, Kyle.
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
No.
Don Edblum?
Yeah.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
No.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
Motion passes. I believe, right? Yes. Um, so we'll move then to Agenda I number 24. Consider the Master Services Agreement with Landrum and Brown Incorporated for the airport. Jason?
Sharon, would you like me to start with this one or would you like to start?
Uh, why don't you go ahead? Um.
Go ahead.
Why don't you go ahead? I'm sorry I had my microphone off for a little bit. You go ahead and I'll fill in.
Sounds good. Um, so this is a an agreement that we'd like the council to consider related to airport development. So in recent months, there's been interest in airport hangar development. And um, I know that our city administrator has been in frequent contact with the developer and and some of us, like myself and other city staff, have been in contact as well. But um, as we review and begin entertaining these types of opportunities, we just feel that there's some value in working with a firm like Landrum and Brown in reviewing how we handle airport development, establishing maybe some minimum standards, um, some recognizing the relationship between tenant and owner and in an official document and reviewing our lease agreements and our lease rates and trying to establish some standard operating practices at our airport. Um, we do believe that that's an important thing to consider and to look at. It also helps us in marketing our airport as we um, look to market Airport East, for example, uh, off the bridge to Opportunity off of Channel Parkway. So um, at our airport commission meeting, we did discuss it on February 16th and we did have a motion to to bring this forward and approve. Um, the agreement's in an amount not to exceed $10,000 and Sharon can clear up anything that I'm missing here. But I think the idea would be to work with um, the potential opportunity to set up another airport hangar lease with a new tenant and then also review to establish minimum standards and review our leasing rates.
Okay, sure.
I'll just add that the developer of a potential hangar is a local developer. And actually, the um, request to go into agreement with this particular firm, um, it was um, tipped off to us by this local developer that another community was working with this same consultant and was making forward progress on the development. So we feel that this um, consultant will provide assistance with this particular hangar development, which can become complex because you're talking about land, lease, rental, and then how that relates to our property tax system and it can be arranged where there's mutual benefit. But at the same time, we want to ensure that the city's interests are maintained. And uh, this particular consultant will will be working on behalf of the city as we go through this uh, um, development. My understanding is this developer and Jason can add to this, too, would uh, would like to proceed this spring. And um, so the sooner the sooner the better. Um, we get multiple requests to keep us moving on this on this particular request by the local developer. And we've been a little slow in responding to them because um, we want to ensure we're protecting the city. That's all I had to add to that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Sharon. Questions for either Jason or Sharon? If not, council has the request.
I'm I move that I move that we uh, approve the airport commission's recommendation and authorize entering into the master service uh, agreement with Landrum and Brown.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote, Kyle.
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yeah.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
Yeah.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion does pass. Agenda I number 25, Consider Resolution Opposing the California Emissions Act. This was a resolution that has uh, already been approved by the Economic Development Authority of the city of Marshall and it's now also before the city council. Sharon, do you have anything you want to add?
I do. Uh, we do have on the meeting Lauren Dyce, our EDA director who brought this towards the um, EDA board. As well, I think she has some representatives who have concerns about this particular uh, adoption of the Clean Car Initiative. And uh, there's direct impacts to um, car dealerships. And so the EDA felt uh, I think, pretty supportive of opposing this because of the impact on business and how it relates to economic development. There was also some discussion about the process being used. Uh, it is being done through administrative rule, not through the legislature. There is public comment. And um, that'll be considered as well. However, um, it's not maybe as open as it would be through the legislative process. So again, the EDA board, uh, in their role on on economic development felt strongly to support opposition and felt it would be possibly beneficial for the city council to also consider this.
Okay, thank you, Sharon. Lauren? Lauren, do you have anything you want to add?
It's Mayor and Council. Um, as Sharon mentioned, this is a resolution that was brought forward. Um, a little bit of background, the cert city of Fergus Falls recently passed a similar resolution just showing their opposition to the process as well as the initiative itself. Um, as Sharon said, it is going through rulemaking, which more or less means the uh, MPCA has final rule. This would likely pass it. Um, and we just wanted to do whatever we could on a EDA and hopefully city level to show that we want to see fair representation, first of all, um, and that the initiative itself is taken into further consideration. Uh, the rule would affect low and zero mesh relations on our car industry. Uh, we do have We do have two car dealers here in the City of Marshall that sell new vehicles. So obviously, they would both be affected by this as well as other industries down the road. In speaking with both of our owners at these separate establishments, the especially electric vehicle portion of this, it it's not feasible for them. They both only have, I think, one to two electric vehicles on their lot. One dealership said they've sold one in the last several years. The other has sold none. But in order to make this feasible for their business, they're also going to have to make changes to their shop. One dealership mentioned that this could be upward of $200,000 to $300,000 just to have their shop be able to seize vehicles. So by the state enforcing them to put these vehicles on their lot, they're paying the inventory on it. They're losing lot space. So there's just a lot of challenges that they will face. And again, from an EDA side, they are relatively large employees here. And we we feel as though this rule is just, it's not feasible for us and for a lot of rural Minnesota and Minnesota as a whole. And as Sharon mentioned, I do have two individuals with me tonight. Chris, he's a representative with Weber Johnson Public Affairs or Public Relations, and then Scott Lambert Association. And I brought them in so they can help me answer questions as it is kind of a a loaded amendment that they're trying to get passed and the process itself. And they have a little bit more background on the history. So I would open it up to questions at this time.
Okay. Lauren, you were breaking up there just a bit, but the were the representatives you have there available to answer questions? Or did they want to present something? We may have lost Lauren there. So we'll open up just for general discussion of the council. Oh, there we go. Council have questions here?
Um, Jim Luszinski, Mayor. You know, I read this and I get leery as the council and the city to get into, I call it get into politics. Neither if I support it or oppose it, we as a council probably have 50% of our population who support it and 50% of our population who oppose this right now. And I do know we keep talking about let's keep our young kids in Marshall. You talk to the millennials and they probably support this. So I just, I get leery of a council stepping out of our bounds and and supporting a recommendation like this. Who's the next group to come in? Next week, we have a group that supports electric cars saying, why aren't you supporting us? I do disagree with the way the government's doing it. I don't believe in mandates, never have. I would say I oppose the government mandating businesses to do stuff, but I cannot support.
Appreciate that input, Jim. I think one thing about all of this, and I don't disagree.
So.
Okay. Jim, did you have more you were saying there?
Well, I just say, I would say I oppose the mandate, but I I will not support opposing the California emissions. I'm not going to give my view on it publicly. Do you want to know my view, call me.
The Jim, the only, the only thing that I want to say, and I believe the understanding they have with this is it's not necessarily in opposition to electric vehicles or the support of electric vehicles. The the issue here is with it not going through the legislature. So it's it's losing representation and it's going through the rulemaking process, which and and I have strong opinion also, but because of my current employment status, I need to refrain from making any further comment. But I do understand the push here is is about the going through rulemaking instead of going through the legislature.
Correct. And that's why I don't, this is not worded to where I can support it. I like you, I agree with you, Craig. I do not agree with government mandates as this is, but I don't like the wording as it is. I'm not going to say if I oppose, I will not support any amendment of oppose. Same as we did the concrete by Pipestone. When I believe it was the county of Pipestone asked us to support concrete along 23, we as a council did not do that because we just said we don't offer those mandates.
So I will also add, I tend to agree somewhat with what Councilmember Luszinski is saying as well as Councilmember Schaefer in that the, I think there's widespread disagreement with the process of rulemaking rather than going through the legislative process. I think that's a, that that's a legitimate concern. As a, and I also think it was entirely appropriate for the EDA to act in their capacity as economic development and concern about local businesses to take the action that they took also. As a council, we have a history of trying to stay in our lane and avoiding resolutions that we don't have direct control over. And I think Sharon would agree that probably every week we receive a request for a resolution from some organization or some group. Sometimes they're within the state, many times they're outside of the state. And we've not brought any of those to the council. We've relied on the council to bring up issues that would be would be addressed. So so I would tend to agree that if there is a resolution to support it, should be directed at the process. But, you know, the issue is really a legislative and state issue and not one that a city council has control over. And having said that, as Lauren Deitz has said, you know, we are concerned about local businesses and and continue to be. And, you know, whether or not we would do that resolution probably would not have an impact one way or another on that. The action by the EDA was the important part. I'll open up for other, other input, other comments.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Steve.
So again, as a member of the EDA, there was a lot of discussion on this. And it's clear that we have businesses that would impact us, probably more so than some other townships or cities within the state, simply because we are on the border and we have states that obviously will not be participating in the California Emissions Act. There's a almost a compact of the California Emissions Act that seems to be breaking through. And I completely agree. It doesn't, in my opinion, it doesn't matter whether individual councilmen or council member supports or is against the act itself from California emissions. The facts are that this resolution is, if you read the wording of the resolution, and I think that Scott can correct me if I'm wrong, or Lauren can correct me if I'm wrong. The wording is exactly that it would oppose the manner of which this was put in against legislative authority. You know, the other thing that I'm completely in favor of and would speak in favor of this resolution is probably what most of us like, and that's the free market. And, you know, there's no question that electric vehicles are coming. GE is looking at getting an entire electric fleet by 2035 and not making any combustible engines by that time. But right now, like our members locally in the community who are car dealers say, they're just not seeing the market for electric vehicles right now. So until the demand drives the supply, I don't see why we need to adopt California's clean car. And I would, I would speak in favor because I'm completely opposed to the way that the state government's going around this. And I know that as a city council, we don't have a lot of power. However, I think it's a stand of grassroots, the right way to do a grassroots motion to say, hey, we live in America and this is the way it's got to be done. And just because somebody thinks it's a good idea and might feel it's the right way, we need to look at voting and utilizing our constitutional process to do it the right way.
After the storm in 2011 and the and and this region and the power problems that happened with neighboring communities, you could be thankful at that point in time you weren't driving an electric fleet. You know, so I mean, it's, I understand what they're trying to do. There's a purpose and a place for that, and that technology needs to grow. And and I fully support that development. But there again, you know, we're doing rulemaking and not legislation.
One other thing I would add to, in addition to it going through the rulemaking process, the, in order to do a, any sort of feedback, it is nearly impossible. The website's very difficult to navigate. Public feedback has been very, very, very difficult. I've tried twice now and neither time I've been successful just because of the time required and the steps required in order to do so. It's all a very frustrating process.
Thank you, Lauren. Don, I think you had a comment?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and fellow councilmen. I'm an environmentally friendly guy. There's a lot of people or maybe even more so than most people. I don't know. But I think what happens in California is great for California. Let them choose to decide what they want for their best interest. It's not necessarily the best interest of what's good for all of Minnesota. Maybe the clean air standards are wonderful for the seven or eight or nine county metro area to our east. But in rural Minnesota, it it just will never work. And again, being the environmentalist I am, you know, I love clean energy. I love all the things that, you know, it does for this world. But those types of, not everything works for everybody or every location in America or the world for that matter. So I would be in agreement to to help pass this resolution again, not just because I don't think it'll work here, it won't. But they're circumventing the the process of going through the legislature with the rulemaking. And that that's just not the right way to do things.
Thank you, Don. Any other input for the council? So there is a a resolution before you. Does the council wish to take action on this resolution?
Move to approve.
I would check it.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Don. Discussion on that motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
No.
Craig Schaefer?
Abstain.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
No.
Russ LaBatt?
Yes.
Jim Luszinski?
No.
Kyle, would you read off the votes?
Mayor Burns, nay.
No, I mean the totals.
Oh.
So there's three in favor.
Yeah.
Three oppose, one abstain. So there's not a majority.
Correct.
So the motion does not prevail?
That's correct.
Okay. Good discussion. Thank you. Lauren, I think we'd be maybe open to an alternate motion to address the process.
I would also maybe suggest that, you know, this was approved and I did vote for it in EDA, that there certainly EDA can provide a letter as well.
Yeah, that's perfect. So.
And John, I agree with you. I think this should be a letter from the EDA, Economic Development. So and I get just leery of the council taking on motions like this because what's going to come up next week that somebody wants us to approve or oppose?
The only thing that I'll say to that, and I and I agree, is that whether we agree with with the effects of the California Clean Air Act or or the push for for new technology vehicles or any of the other, the other spin things that they're that they put to it for positives, the process stinks. And as a city, we would never do that process.
And I agree with you, Craig, 100% on that.
Yep, and and that was my point also, Craig. Okay. With that, is there any other discussion on this item? If not, we'll we'll proceed then to Agenda Number 27, Commission Board Liaison Reports. The Regional Development Revolving Loan Fund, oh, excuse me.
Got appointment?
Agenda Number 26. I'm, my apologies. Agenda Number 26 is Consider Appointments to Various Boards and Commissions. The, we have an opening on Community Services Board. We have received one application. There's actually two openings on Community Services Board. We've received one application, and I would recommend that that applicant, Melissa Doherty, be appointed to a term on the Community Services Advisory Board that will expire on February 28, 2024. I'd offer that as a recommendation and entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Don. Discussion? If not, Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yeah.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
Yes.
Jim Luszinski?
Yes.
And the motion does pass. Now we'll move to Agenda Number 27, Commission Board Liaison Reports. From my part, the Southwest Regional Development Commission Revolving Loan Fund continues to meet almost weekly, certainly every two weeks. And the revolving loan fund COVID-19 grant fund is still funds available, but of the original $1.48 million, there is approximately $220,000 that is remaining to loan out, still available to any business that in the nine county area that was impacted by COVID. With that, we'll move then. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Airport Commission met. I was not able to attend, but we did take action on their request item tonight. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, Steve?
Mr. Mayor, we did meet for the EDA. We talked, we just got done talking about a lot of the stuff that we talked about. We also talked about some Parkway properties and selling those for an offer. Lots of good discussion in the EDA, and we're very thankful for the leadership of Mrs. Deitz and the entire EDA. We've really got some good stuff coming on. I'll defer the remainder of the discussion for Councilmember De Kramer. My other committees did not meet.
Thank you, Steve. Don?
My two committees have not met. We did have a comp, begin the process of the comprehensive plan meetings and looking at those proposals. That will be ongoing here over the next month.
Okay, thank you, Don. John?
First of all, MMU met. Couple of things there. Actually, some more good news coming our way from there. There's a settlement that right at this point, FERC needs to officially approve. And if that's the case, there's a settlement of 435,000 that will be coming back to the customers of MMU. Just a couple of other things I wanted to point out with utilities. In all our discussion and your, the news lately of Texas and going on, you look at our results, January 20th through January 2021, our reliability rate was 99.9999. Four times, it's about as good as you can possibly get. It's higher than what it's been in the past for utilities. Really a case in point, to have a good system, you take care of it, you invest in it. It works for you. I'll point out that all of our windmills kept running at 22 below or 24 below, whatever it was.
Hey, John?
Yeah.
Was the point 00001, was that a third party hit? The failure to do a goal for one?
It might have been a squirrel. Yeah, I don't know. I'd have to get back on you on that one, Craig. But I do know there was a squirrel that hit the system.
I think the other other thing to add on to that, and I hate to jump in on your year report. Even in the the blowdown that was referenced earlier about eight years ago, we didn't lose power in City Marshall.
No.
Where they had overhead lines outside the City of Marshall, they did. Go ahead.
Yeah, well, okay, getting into EDA, Councilman Meister covered most of it, saying we did have a proposal for purchase of the remainder of land and Parkway addition. We countered offered, and I believe at this point that's been turned down. So and then last, the new committee. and then last, the new committee, the Diversity Committee or has also been meeting pretty regular. We have got draft bylaws that probably going to the committee in our next meeting. And we're going through the rather processes going through of recommending the additional members to the commission similar to what we just did in the previous act. And a little unusual in this case, we have got a lot of requests. So there's, I think, at the time, seven, eight requests or I think at the time was really only about two openings that were left. We're going to do some shifting around. Of some members were setting up some non-voting standard memberships to organizations. And some of the people that were previously appointed are moving over into those. And so there's probably going to be a few more openings coming in, but we're certainly have many more applicants than we have openings for this commission. So that's very good to see.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Russ?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only one of my committees that met was CDB, and I was unable to attend. So I had Kyle include the minutes of that meeting in our packet this evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and Jim?
Um, my two did not meet, but I have a short update on City Hall, actually very short today. We acted on the change order, the one change order for forty-four hundred dollars. City Hall is clipping long, still on schedule, hopefully be finished by June first. Nothing major reported on City Hall either. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move that to Councilmember Individual Items. Craig, this is your end.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just make one comment here related to the request for that that Lauren brought forward. Had a little backside here with a couple other members. You know, talk about this thing before, you know, I had to abstain based on my profession and and I do have some fairly strong feelings about the process and casting the vote that I would have wanted to have casted would have meant announcing my retirement tomorrow, and I haven't coached that with my wife yet. So I wasn't prepared to do that. But I I did want to go on record as just saying that I do have strong feelings about the process. And so may or may not pay a price for that later. I guess I'll deal with that. But sometimes you got to have fortitude.
Okay. Anything else, Craig? Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to keep people appraised of COVID. You know, we're getting more and more vaccines. State is changing. Again, some of the process of getting vaccines into arms, they've announced that they're going to let Hy-Vee get a federal allotment and Thrifty White get a federal allotment and Walmart's got a federal allotment. We're still getting ours through the state Emergency Management Coalition. We get them, we call people, and we're working so more people. So you've got pharmacies, the hospital and public health all putting vaccines into arms. Be aware, though, that the vaccine is really good, but none of people have it yet. So make sure you keep wearing our masks, washing our hands, staying home when you're sick, and take care of each other and yourself. And hopefully, we'll get back to normal by next fall. But I think that we're going to probably, the experts are saying, have a booster every year, just like we do for the flu shot with this. And I think we're going to have this for a long time. So take care of each other and take care of yourselves. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Don?
I have nothing.
And John?
Just earlier today, took part in the Cultures on the Prairie event that was offered virtually this year. You know, it's been out at the high school, out at the college, and this time it had to go virtual. I think the peak that I saw, there was ninety-three attending. And I know from the earlier introductions, there was attendees from all over the state. Minneapolis, Suburbs, Van Cato, Glencoe, Laverne, all over, very good discussion, very good. Really, very good programs and presentations made. There is a recording made that's been on it. And if whenever that's available, I would encourage you to take a look at it. The city was one of the sponsors of the event, and that was very good. And just old sideline, Amanda Beckler did a lot of time and effort into it as long as several others. But one of our employees, Amanda, did a very good job on it. So a shout out to everybody that was involved. It was a very good program.
Thank you, John. Russ?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing I had was I was going to remind people to shovel their sidewalks. But after the last couple of days, I think I don't have to remind people because everything's been melting. So as if you're all walking, just be careful because that ice can form overnight and it could be slippery. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
And Jim?
Um, the thing I'm going to bring up is, you know, a week ago, week and a half ago, there was that shooting in Buffalo. And that's part of why our city hall, not because of that, but the safety measures that we've had to enact in the city hall has pushed up the cost to protect our staff. And that's becoming very important. When you consider that, that is a community that's the same size as ours. And as a community that's close to me, because I actually have several homes that I rent out to an organization there, just two blocks from that clinic. So I see it happen there. We were in town that day. We saw it happen. And I just think, boy, I really dread that ever happening in Marshall. And that is why some of the costs in our city halls are higher than what you think it should be, because we have enacted safety measures to protect our 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 staff. And we have to do that in this day and age. So I just want to share where where some of the cost comes in our city hall.
Thank you, Jim. We'll move then to staff reports. Sharon?
The presentation by Terry Heaton, I know that was a lot to take in in a short period of time. So I do have that PowerPoint, and I will forward that on to the council tonight. And again, I probably will contact you if I don't hear from you first about just some general feelings and direction. If we do the general obligation referendum process, we probably want to get started on it fairly soon. And I I know we're still waiting on RFPs, which are due on March fourth. And then I'll just mention to the mayor and I and our EDA director, I put this in my weekly update, didn't meet with the new Marshall Alvera Regional CEO, Debbie Stryer. And I think there'll be some good moves made there on behalf of the region, but also some positive impacts for the city of Marshall. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Sharon. Jason?
Nothing to report tonight, Mayor.
Any questions for Jason?
Just one is, we went through our new bidding process. We got some good results on it. Any other comments regarding our bid pack, our bid methods?
No specific comments from any contractors, which I think must be a resounding vote of support. So I think we think it went really well.
Good. Okay. Thank you, Jason. And Dennis?
Short, pardon me, update. We did close. City sold property to Best Top Soil. That's a new landscaping business of Action Group off of West Main Street. And I'm not promoting their business, but they did say, for all you people who like to do your own landscaping, they'll have bulk landscaping materials either for delivery or pickup. That's what this land that they bought from the city is storage out behind their existing building, where there will be large bunkers filled with, whether it's sand, dirt, gravel, colored bark, I suppose, things like that for landscaping. So you know, the city did close on that and been paid for. So.
Well, thank you, Dennis. The remaining items on the agenda, the information items, including the building permits and the upcoming meetings for your review. Is there anything else to come forward this evening?
I move adjournment.
Motion by seconded by Steve to adjourn discussion. If not, by voice, hold all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We're adjourned.